Rise for invocation and pledge.
Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on those matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds opened and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need the roll call.
Here.
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 Thank you.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 AM in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, Florida, to consider proposed applications and staff recommendations pursuant to the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and Type II variances, and issues advisory recommendations on other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing at 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, Florida, in the Jane M. Thompson Memorial Chambers, sixth floor, on applications not subject to zoning commission final action. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures for conduct of quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following. Any communication with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any person representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions, to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's for proof of publication?
No.
Is that what?
We need proof of publication. We have proof of publication?
We have proof of publication.
And now swearing in?
All those wishing to testify on today's items, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Now approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the November 6th minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
That was Vinnicor and Pavlik, right?
Correct.
Amendments to the agenda?
We do have a few amendments to our agenda, starting with item number two, DOA 2025-01103, TLC Village. There is a modification to Exhibit C to add all petitions number four. Amend Exhibit C specifically Site Design 1A to delete language. Delete from Exhibit C Site Design Condition 2 and renumber accordingly. Amend Exhibit C Use Limitation 3. Amend Exhibit C Use Limitation 4 and add that as a new condition. Item 3, DOA CA 2024-01594, Polo Club of Boca Raton, modifying the Class A conditional use conditions described in Exhibit C 2 to modify Use Limitation Number 1, add additional language. And item 4, DOA ZB 2025-01602, Project Tango, to amend the agenda to correct the motions that we had flip-flopped. So Motion A would be relative to adopting a resolution, and B would be for a recommendation. Amending the staff report Exhibit B 2 under standards and analysis and findings to correct the table for the variance, and amend variance conditions described in Exhibit C 2 to delete all petition number 2. That's all.
All right. Any requests to pull items from consent?
I think we'd like to pull number 4. We have over 10 comment cards from the audience.
All right. We need a motion?
A motion to adopt?
Adopt the agenda with the pulling of items.
Second.
All in favor?
Item 4, right?
Item 4. All in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay. Let's start on conflicts and recusals. Commissioner Jones Van?
Have none.
None.
Commissioner Comer?
These are disclosures?
Disclosures or recusals?
None.
Conflicts and recusals.
Right. With regards to the consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
The only disclosure I have is that?
This is just whether you have any conflicts or recusals to abstain from voting.
No.
None.
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 Nope.
So we're ready for the consent agenda?
Yes. So you will want to do disclosures on the consent items minus number 4, because we will do that when we get to the regular agenda.
All right. Starting on my left, any disclosures on consent?
None.
As to item number 3, I received a call from John Roche, who is a land planner with Gunster Yocely. I had two brief discussions with him. None of them substantive was all with regards to setting a time to speak, which we never did.
None. For item number 2, I spoke to Bradley Miller. Item number 3, I spoke to Thomas Chalouski and Brian Terry.
Item number 3, I spoke to the applicant.
I have none?
None.
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 So on consent, we're then ready for a?
Motion to adopt the consent items as less item number 4.
I'll second.
Motion in second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So that'll bring us to the item that was pulled from the consent agenda, number 4. Number 4 is DOA ZB 2025-01602, known as Project Tango. There are two requests that are to be presented before the board. We have a Type II variance to allow a reduction in the parking calculation for data information and processing use. And then we have a development order amendment to modify the master plan within an economic development center, MUPD, to add square footage and modify phasing. So we can turn it over to the applicant for their presentation, and then staff.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Wasn't sure if it was coming through. Ernie Cox, on behalf of the applicant, PBA Holdings, Inc., we've got a brief presentation. These are the items that were provided. I wanted to give a little bit of history because I realized, oh, thank you. Should I push forward? It'll go. Will this take me back to beginning? Okay. Sorry. I thought it would be helpful to provide a little bit of history first, relative to this project, because I realized, as I was talking to some folks this morning, that it's new to many people. So as you may know, Palm Beach Aggregates and the surroundings have been out there in operation since the late 1990s, and that facility includes not only the Palm Beach Aggregates Mine, but it also includes the South Florida Water Management District, L8 Reservoir, the FPNL West Energy Center, the C51 Reservoir, in Phase 1 and Phase 2. And so the operations have been going on and evolving over time. The property owners also used to own what we refer to as the Lazy F Ranch, which is also the community of Arden. And I'm familiar with that one because I did the work on the entitlements and the approval of Arden before it became Arden. At that time, it was called Highland Dunes. But back in 2016, we came in because there was an interest by the state and the county in diversifying the economy and looking at a need to provide for more light industrial sites in Palm Beach County. And so at that time, the 138 acres, I'll come back to the plan, but the 138 acres of the site was approved as the Central Park Commerce Center with an ability to do 471,008 square feet of light industrial, and then 2 point, whatever number of, 2.7 million of other EDC uses. So the original approvals were in 2016, both the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. The reason the 64 acres, which has now been added, now we've got 202 acres, was that was at that time used by a concrete plant, an asphalt plant, and for the hurricane debris removal. So there was an agreement with the Solid Waste Authority that when we had a hurricane or yard waste, the yard waste would come in on trucks, be chopped into little pieces, and then taken back out in little pieces. And then zoning was approved for the variance back then because we had done the analysis of the data center, and that original approval was going to have about a million square feet of data center, and then the balance was going to be light industrial or other uses, because that was what was needed at the time. But the data center is essentially a series of buildings full of computers, and there are not that many employees. The employees that are there are high-paid employees because their job is to make sure the computers stay running and the equipment that supports the computers. But parking the site at one unit, one parking space for 250 square feet would result in an entire sea of empty parking places. And so that's why the variance was approved for the 138 acres back in 2016. If I could move here, actually, I can do this. I think. Oh, I messed it up again. Sorry. So we rezoned it. We reduced the interior trees, but because also, one of the things about the data center use is it has very, very high security needs. There's federal regulations on data centers that essentially you have a gate to get in, then you have a fence to get in, then you have a door to get in, and then you have a door to get into the really high-tech computers. And so there wasn't a desire to connect with other uses. If you had a warehouse next to a data center, you want to make sure there's no interconnectivity. And then we actually had to commence construction because one of the unique things about this approval, it's in what's called the Glades Area Protection Overlay, which was adopted many years ago in connection with the original entitlements of what became Arden. And that was there would be no residential development west of the L8 Canal. And that there were very strict restrictions on what you could and could not do, and there would not be any development west of the FPNL Power Plant. And so that was an important consideration, and you had to commence development because there were three important parts. One is the development had to commence to use what we're referred to in the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code as the unique attributes of the site. One of those is immediately adjacent to the FPL West Energy Facility, which is a combined cycle natural gas plant, 3,800 megawatts, and needing to be able to connect the power directly to it to reduce any losses. The second was the site has been filled with the sand that came out of the L8 Flow Equalization Basin. It was originally the L8 Reservoir, and so 45 million cubic yards of sand had been dredged out of the L8, part of it on this site, part of it underneath the FPNL Power Plant, and then the rest of it on Arden, what has now become Arden. And so Arden has about 15 feet of sand that came out from the bottom of the L8. And so that condition had to be done. And then in 2023, there was a text amendment to go ahead and modify this. So the Board of County Commissioners in November of '23 initiated a text amendment to be able to expand this area to pick up the 64 acres in the front, because by that time, the county and the Solid Waste Authority was no longer using it for hurricane debris. And so we wanted to clean that up, and there was a need to take the original approvals and expand it to that 64 acres. What that also means is that at some point, as we redevelop this site, the asphalt plant will go away, and the concrete plant will go away. So those are what I would call heavy industrial uses to be replaced by light industrial uses. And so that was the modification that came before you back in January to add the 64 acres. So how do I go back to the beginning? I just thought a little bit of history may be helpful, and we're happy to answer any questions. Okay. So now I'm, location at 20 Mile Bend, and you can see in this aerial photo what at that time, before the development of Arden, it was a big sand area. Originally, it was originally a ranch, then it was covered with sand, then it was a development project, then those development approvals were taken down. It was then put into forestry, and then Arden was approved. And this photo shows the reservoirs to the north of the site. Drilling in, this is certainly closer. Now you can see the current aerial of the development of Arden, and I think, is this a button to? Sorry. I can't point, but if you go from east to west, you can see the Arden site. There's also, since that time, been a school built. We worked together with the school district prior to Arden to put in a new school that's now in and operating. To the west of the school site is a three-acre park site that's owned by the county, may someday be an equestrian trailhead, because as you may know, the NINA, the Northern Everglades Trail System, NINA Trail System runs up the L8 Canal. So you see the homes on Arden, and then there's a 200-foot at the top of the berm. So if you think about all the sand, Arden Homes, top of berm, there's a trail that runs on the top of the berm, 200 feet. Then there's a 50-foot piece at the bottom of the berm, and then there's the 200-foot right-of-way, or 500-foot right-of-way for the L8 Canal, but the 200-foot canal. And then to the west of the L8 Canal right-of-way is a 400-foot wildlife corridor parcel that's owned by the South Florida Water Management District. And so you've got 200 feet of berm, 50 feet, so that's 250, plus 500 feet, 750, plus 400 feet, 1150, before you get to the Palm Beach Aggregates site. And in this photo, you can see it's been utilized for the past two years for lay-down by Florida Power and Light, as Florida Power and Light has been replacing the 500 KV power poles. The original ones, the ones you saw that looked rusted all the time, those were rated, I think, 115 mile-an-hour winds. The new poles are rated to 150 or 160 mile-an-hour winds. And so within the site is the project we're talking about. We're not increasing the intensity from the original comprehensive plan back in 2016. We're just rearranging the uses. I'm going to go a little bit further. This is the request. Now we're looking at doing the, we've defined the EDC uses and amended the phasing. We'll go into the phasing here in a minute, and that matches the original approvals back from 2016. And then the variance is to take the variance that currently applies to the 138 acres to apply to the whole site, so that as we go forward, any data center use, whether it's 200,000 square feet or a million square feet or more, would want to park at the same ratio. And so we're asking that that variance be extended to cover the whole site for any of the data center use. Any other uses would continue to be parked at the ratio in the Land Development Code, including the, there's a 1.2 million square foot warehouse that's approved within the site. And then this is the ordinance, and these are the current EDC uses that we're proposing, 1.7 million of data center and a warehouse of 1.9. And then there is a concurrency reservation that you can convert one to the other. And so back to the history, there was originally a plan to do about a million square feet of data center, which was approved. Then we had a warehouse developer come into us and say, we really want to do a warehouse. And so that approval went through where we went to 202,000 square feet of data center and 1.2 million square feet of warehouse. And now the data center, we've been working closely with the Business Development Board on Project Tango, which is we have a user working through the BDB process that is ready to go forward and start building the data center. It's something that we've been working with the county on since, really, prior to the 2016 approvals. This is the parking spaces, which we've already talked about, and for the expanded land area. I wanted to talk a little bit about traffic, because that's been one of the concerns, is that there is approved traffic on the site based upon warehouse approvals that exist and the smaller data center. And the data center, actually, as we convert from warehouse to data center, we reduce trips. And the reason is, other than the few employees that come in for the data center, it's not the same as a warehouse that's got trucks coming in and out every day delivering goods to people. So we thought it was important, and we worked through this in great detail with staff. And if you all have any specific traffic questions, our traffic consultant's here. But there's a reduction. To me, it's simple. Warehouse has lots of trucks bringing things in and out to everybody that wants to order stuff online and have it delivered to their home. Data center has less, and that relates also to the parking. This is what the site looks like today, and you can see the filled area with the lay-down yard with FPL. The asphalt plant is right there in the middle at the bottom. The concrete plant is right there, and if you drive by the site, you can see both of those. Those are proposed to go out and be discontinued. We're also currently redoing the entrance way. I was out there yesterday, so the construction on the entrance way is almost done. And so instead of it being a very industrial mine entrance way, it's now, when we complete it, going to be landscaped and attractive and look good coming in. But that's what it looks like today, the power plants to the west. This is again Arden, South Florida Water Management District, the site, FPL, and that blue area heading down, that's the wildlife corridor that I spoke about a minute ago. This is the 202 acres that we're talking about. That's a view of the property looking at the power plant. And then this is looking from State Route 80. One thing that's already been done pursuant to the prior approvals is there's a lengthened turn lane that has been installed, and that construction's almost done. This is the master plan, and relative to the master plan, what we're doing is adding the property to the right into the master plan. It's already added into the MUPD. It's already added into the comprehensive plan, and so we're planning that. And then this is an illustrative site plan. We are still working through the site plan and the specific configuration. Kind of going bottom to top, you see the new entrance way with the new ponds in the bottom right. Then to the left are three data center buildings. That would be Phase 2 of the project. Phase 1 of the project is the 1.2 million square foot warehouse that is already approved. And then to the right would be the additional data center buildings. We're anticipating those would be tilt-wall concrete buildings, so designed to withstand hurricane-force winds, but also hold sound inside. And then we're planning to do structured parking garages on that. A couple of things that have come up that I think are important is first, water usage. So we've worked closely with the Palm Beach County Water Utilities Department, Ali Babet and his team, and we are planning to use a closed-loop system that is not going to use potable water. That's the cleanest, easiest, simplest way to do it. The technology works well. It has the least noise impact, and the only water that we're proposing to use would be for human consumption, so bathrooms, restrooms, et cetera. We do have a condition that's in the staff-proposed conditions, which we agree with, which is that if we need to use water, we would use reclaimed water, and we've got to coordinate with FPL, because FPL uses reclaimed water for their cooling tanks, the big cooling towers that are out there. I think they can use up to 24, 25 million gallons a day of reclaimed water. So if we were to need water for cooling, we would work with the utility department to use reclaimed water and coordinate closely with FPL. But we're not planning on using that because the technology is better to use a complete comple- closed-loop system. Second, I talked a little bit about it already, but traffic, concerns about traffic in and out. I know there are some issues with Southern Boulevard and traffic on that road already. The data center portion of this would reduce the traffic on Southern Boulevard. The noise, noise is a very important issue. There are data centers around the country that are loud. That's not an acceptable outcome for Palm Beach County or for us. And so our plan is that we will be below the county's regulations on noise. But to make sure that our feet are held to the fire on that, we've got a condition that requires us, before any building construction, to do a detailed noise study and provide that for review and approval. Again, we don't want to have a noise impact on our neighbors next door, particularly having developed that community. And then there's been a question about power rates. Go ahead and just get it out there. We don't have an opportunity to set any rates. Rates for Florida Power and Light are set by the Public Service Commission. And so those Public Service Commission rates apply to the entirety of FPL's system, and we have to meet the FPL rate, whatever it is. We don't get to rate that. We also won't get priority over any other user. Florida Power and Light has a service territory and an obligation to provide power to everyone in their service territory. They have capacity. We've been working very closely with them. We've reached a very detailed power agreement with FPL that essentially requires us to pay for power whether we use it or not. And it provides FPL with baseload. One of the things that's challenging for FPL and all the utilities is the ups and downs of utility uses. People come home from work, air conditionings go on, you start making dinner, power usage goes up. Middle of the night, power usage goes down. And what that means is, they've got to crank up and slow down their power plants. Whereas the data center use is a baseload that comes at a regular base, lets them operate at efficiencies. But they will make sure that they serve everybody, including whatever data center use that we have. And from a FPL perspective, they have been actively looking to bring data centers into their service territory to serve the needs. All of us have our phones, we've got our computers. We want our stuff immediately. This latency, the closer the computer that's making the decisions on your phone or computer or Wall Street South work that the BDB has been doing, the more efficient it is. And so for Palm Beach County to be able to compete, not only for the data center users, but for the people that use the data centers, the closer it is, the better. And this site, 20 miles inland, elevated 23 feet above sea level, immediately next to the power plant, is one of the best sites in the state of Florida for a data center. And if the site weren't being used for a data center, that data center's going to go somewhere else. So I think, and I reserve, if there are questions that come up during public comment, I've had an opportunity to meet with Ben Brown just this morning. We talked to each other on the phone. We're going to be getting together. I do not want to have any negative impact on Arden. And so we're going to get together, talk it through. If I could have an opportunity to answer any questions that may come up in public comment, and happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Let me see if there's anything else. I think, and this was already done, recommendation, we agree, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Staff, this time?
I don't have much to add beyond what we already have in our staff report. But yes, they are modifying their proposal, and we have included some phasing conditions, the architecture and noise conditions. Engineering has added some additional conditions as well. Landscaping, we did carry forward the south buffer that was in the prior approval when it was added in. And then on the east property line, we've included an additional berm with vegetation to assist with noise as well. And then, of course, we've added the water and wastewater conditions, as he had mentioned and agreed to for our concerns as it relates to the usage of water and an ability to use the gray water or other alternative to reduce the need to use our potable water. And I think that's about it. Data center is a fairly new use in the code. This will be the first one in Palm Beach County on the unincorporated area. And so we are in support of both of the requests.
Okay, we'll move to public comments. Commissioner Public.
Yes, so I have one comment that does not wish to speak and the rest do. So I'm just going to put Anaya Reyes' comment in the file. And then I'm going to call you up. As you come up, you've got three minutes. You need to state your, you need to state your name, thank you, name and address for the record. So first up is Robert LaBruno.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, and I apologize if I'm blurring the lines. Did we do disclosures on this one?
No, not yet.
All right. Let's take, sorry about that. Disclosure starting on my left.
I received an email from a Clifford Hertz, I believe with Nelson Mullins regarding this project, but I haven't spoken with him, and there is no substantive information in the email.
None. I spoke to Doug Murray and Joe Verdom.
None.
I have none.
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 Okay, we'll go back to public comments. Thank you.
All right, Robert, if you could come up.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. I'm not only an Arden resident, my name is Robert LaBruno. I live at 13660 Folk Stone Court.
Or get the mic.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry. Robert LaBruno, I actually live at 19527 Barn Swallow in Arden. I'm not only an Arden resident, I'm actually a data center expert. I've been in the data center business since I'm 18. So my first concern would be, it's basically a couple thousand feet from a brand-new school and a 33,000-person community. And noise is definitely a concern. I'm sure there's been some advances in data center technology, but data centers are loud. They have a lot of air conditioners. That's going to be the main source of noise. And on top of that, you already have FPL with an amazing amount of noise. They're going to throw those air conditioners on top of it. It's definitely going to be noisy for the community, and it is super close to the school. So that'd be my main concern, is the actual noise. And actually, the second point is, what benefit does it actually serve the Arden community? To say that having a data center close for applications to be quicker, that's a mute point with high-speed internet. The data center can be across the street or down the block or in another state. That really doesn't matter. So I apologize to the guy who gave the presentation, but it's a good point, but it's kind of mute, because they have fiber in the community, so the connectivity is fantastic and fast. Having a data center next door doesn't really help us. So concern is noise, number one. Number two, what is the benefit to the community? Number three is traffic, obviously. Traffic is a big problem in Arden today. It's a big problem on Southern today. You have all the folks from Arden, and you have all the folks from Westlake trying to get to and from work. So I do understand a data center doesn't increase a ton of traffic, because there isn't a lot of employees. That is correct. It'll be probably very minimally staffed. But at the end of the day, until they open up the Okachobee entrance for the Arden residents, there's a massive amount of traffic every day. It's a nightmare. It's a gridlock, basically. It's like living in a metropolitan city, but you're 20 minutes out in the middle of nowhere in West Palm Beach. So it's a little strange of a situation. So I would just, the noise, I think, would be the biggest concern that I would have. I don't think the water, because they have to cool it, and once the water's hot, they have to do something with it. I think the power plant's already addressing that, so I don't think that's a concern. But definitely the noise, because the power plant is noisy. I can hear it from my bedroom window, and they're going to put the air conditioners on top of it. So that's my concern. And what benefit does it have for the community? Because as far as I can tell, I can't see any. And I could probably work there. So me saying that means something. Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to ask that you do not clap, just let everybody speak.
Regarding your, regarding your concerns with regards to noise.
Yes, sir.
The applicant indicated that there would be a condition of approval with regards to the construction, and that they would have to seek that approval from the county prior to the actual construction of the buildings. Do you have any views on that?
Does that take into consideration the existing noise? I would assume yes. So it'd be existing noise with the addition that they're going to put on top of it. And I would question, how are they even going to measure that?
Okay, I think that would be a question really for the applicant. They could probably answer it as well as the county.
Right. Yeah, I'm not an expert in noise.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up is Puni Martinez.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay? Okay. My name is Puni Charkeyan Martinez. I also live in Arden. I live at 1495 Wandering Willow Way. Truth be told, I'm here on behalf of my children. I have two small kids, one of them who attends the elementary school. I, like my predecessor said, I am concerned about the noise. I can actually hear on the loudspeaker, the power plant, when they give announcements, you know, to their employees from my master bedroom. So I'm very concerned about, you know, the noise that we could potentially hear from this. Traffic is also a concern. We have one exit. While there may be discussion of like a traffic light getting put up eventually for the school, when school first opened and started, there were four different traffic patterns that they had to go through to figure out the safest way to get all of the vehicles that were dropping off and picking up children to and from their homes. We have one exit. Anytime there's an accident on Southern Boulevard, we are oftentimes stuck in the community until it clears out. I do have a concern regarding the traffic. When the applicant was speaking, everything was put in terms of 2016. Well, yes, but we need to remember everything that's happened since 2016. How many homes are there? The school that's there? How many children are there? Ultimately, I'm not educated enough to speak on everything as the person in front of me did, but my view would be to oppose this. And that's all I have.
Thank you. No, no clapping, please, no clapping.
Just hold it so we can get the session.
We ask every time to just let people speak, be polite and professional. Thank you. Next is Franklin Teyuro. Am I saying that right? Franklin on 869 Honey Oak Court.
You got it.
Okay. No, he's coming up.
Okay.
Thank you for the time. I also have 12 years in data center business. I, basically, most of my career have been around the data center, cloud business, and cybersecurity. And I can tell you, they are dealing with federal government-type customers, and customers like Amazon and Google, among others, is that it's not just noise. One thing that every single data center needs is a lot of water. There's no way around it, and power. I can tell you right now, there's a lot of data centers, especially in Miami, they are fighting for power, because they run out of power. These machines, they're getting smaller, but they demand a lot more power than ever. So testing, they have to test their equipment, AC units, generators, and that's sometimes twice a month, three times a month. So there's still going to be a lot more, not just the humming of the equipment, but the testing of those generators. Besides that is the security. One thing that you, a lot of people don't realize is that, I don't know what kind of customers they're going to have, but is, if they're going to have federal government, if they're going to have top anything, they're putting a target on, close to us. And those are my concerns, is noise, our power consumption, our water consumption, and also our security. And you can look around. Virginia has a bunch of issues with data centers. Arizona's having a bunch of issues with data centers, Texas, among others. So I love the data center business, just like the person that was talking about it the other day. I love that business, but not next door. It's too close. I can tell you, you know, some of the data centers I work for, they keep it 60 miles away from everything, for security, for noise, among other things. So definitely opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, glasses are needed. Avi Bouchet, B-U-E-C-H-T.
Hello, my name is Avi Beck. I live at 19640 Tree Stand Terrace. I'm also a resident of Arden. I am the Director of Real Estate and Facilities for a large tenant in Palm Beach County. I represent their real estate for about 1.3 million square feet across the country. We primarily utilize industrial real estate, so I am well-versed in understanding the differences between a warehouse building and a data center. But today, I'm coming to you not as a real estate person, but as a mom, a wife, and a resident of Arden. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am respectfully opposing proposed 3 million-square-foot data center development adjacent to our neighborhood. You know, eventually, the warehouse component that they have said that they are going to build, they are going to seek a variance to also convert that to data center. I want to be clear, my opposition is not against responsible economic development or technology investment. It is about location, impact, and long-term compatibility with the character and infrastructure of our community. A project of this magnitude, essentially an industrial, power- and water-intensive campus, does not belong next to thousands of families who moved to Locksahatchie specifically for peace, open land, clean air, and a healthier environment for our children. The scale and intensity of this development is incompatible with the surrounding residential community. A hyperscale data center is not a commercial building. It's a 24/7 industrial operation with constant noise from cooling systems, massive HVAC stacks, vibration, security lighting, and weekly diesel generator testing. No amount of landscaping can hide the industrial reality of a facility of this size. Secondly, the environmental and infrastructural impacts are not small. Data centers are some of the largest consumers of electricity, and depending on the cooling method, can require significant volumes of water. This project would place a major strain on local utilities not designed for this level of industrial use. I should also add that currently, with just the power plant located next to us, we still lose power five to six times every week. FPNL has been working on a solution for that, but adding an additional utility user of this size and magnitude would increase the strain on our infrastructure. Increased truck traffic, there will be truck traffic, fuel deliveries, backup generator emissions, and heat discharge also pose a long-term risk to the residents of this community. Lastly, the long-term health and quality of life impacts have not been sufficiently addressed. Other communities across the country report constant low-frequency noise, nighttime light pollution, degraded air quality during generator testing, and reduced property values after data centers were built near their homes. Once a data center is built, these impacts cannot be undone. Families in Arden chose this area for its unique balance of nature, quiet safety and residential quality. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Riley.
Good morning, thank you. Jim Riley, 1106 Timberreap Trail, also an Arden resident. We've heard some great technical reasons against the project. I speak solely as a resident. We speak of Arden, you know, it's a square on the map. There's a small village there, that's 2,300 homes with, close to, that's got to be seven, 8,000 people, mostly millennial families with small children. You approved and had built a school right adjacent, basically, to the site we're speaking about today. And it's a nice community, and it's a residential community. I'd ask you if any of you would want a data center such as this to pop up 1,000 feet from your home, wherever you may live. It's truly a lifestyle issue for all of us who live in Arden. Other issues people have brought up, and I'll speak on again. Southern Boulevard. Southern Boulevard is a death trap. We're all learning that. It's a straight, dangerous road, and we're going to add more traffic to it. Not only, maybe not too much traffic. Not only, maybe not too much traffic of employees, but we've got to go through a construction phase. I don't know how long that is. And, you know, that's dangerous. We're a community. We want, we want to act like a community. We have no retail within five miles, but we're going to have a data center. So I just would like you to think about that, and I'm opposed to the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Julie Germana. I'm one of the newest Arden residents. I, like many others, moved to Loxahatchee to get away from the loud hustle and bustle of the more urban areas of our county. The peace and quiet that is felt in Arden's agri-hood is a huge reason we bought our home. And so you can understand that when I was met with this notice that the county had already approved a data center in my backyard, I was shocked. And when I mean my backyard, I mean my backyard. It backs up to the berm, to the canal. I will be right on top of it. Now the applicant is requesting to make the data center usage larger into a hyperscale AI data center, which would require a critical IT load of 100 megawatts or greater to align with the new regulations recently initiated by House Bill 7031. That allows the applicant to build and run a data center free of the state's 6% sales tax, which includes the electricity to power it. The amount of electricity used for this data center is 100 megawatts. You know what it is to power 2,000 homes, which is roughly the size of Arden? Two. So why are we going to add a data center in our backyard that is six times smaller than Arden, uses 50 times more power, while they're receiving a tax exemption on that electrical, electrical usage? How does that massive data center benefit our community? And would you volunteer your backyard for this? Second, the vibration and noise pollution from data centers, cooling efforts have been linked to sleep disturbances, stress, anxiety, high blood pressure, and even cardiovascular events. Currently, data center noise has caused considerable adverse effects to those living 1,300 feet or more from the center. That data center is that distance from my home. Even with mitigating measures, the low hum and vibration can cause the aforementioned medical ailments, as well as potential drops in property values, as was stated. Noise is never about sound. It is inseparable from issues of power and powerlessness. Noise pollution is a violation that we can't control, and because of our anatomy, it's hard to escape. How does this data center benefit our community? Would you volunteer your backyard for this? Lastly, the construction process may bring jobs for a short time, but the long-term employment to run a data center is minimal, as Mr. Cox noted, which is shown in the request to decrease the amount of parking. So where are the long-term financial benefits from building a building such as this so close to a residential area? It's understood why data centers are needed. It's not lost on us that increasing, our increasingly digital world needs storage facilities, but why does this extremely large center need to be so close to our homes that we purposely bought for the peace and quiet? My request today is for you to advocate for the people and think about how this benefits our community. And if you would volunteer your backyard for this, please deny the applicant's request to increase the size of the hyperscale AI data center. And as the gentleman back there beside me was noting, yes, it is already approved. The data center is already approved. It was approved long before most of us moved in, before Arden was a thing. But then making it bigger is giving them the tax credit that they want, and if we deny that, maybe they'll walk away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Raymond Penula.
Very close. I also pronounce it wrong, too. That's fine. All right, my name is Raymond Penuela. I'm a resident of Arden, live at 1408 Haywagon Trail. Been there for about three years. I'm in the data industry. I love it. I'm not specifically into data centers, but I use it. And I think, a lot of people made great points so far. But one of the things that I think we really got to point out, two things. One, this was approved originally 10 years ago, 2016, and at the time, Arden didn't exist. There was no elementary school. Now, there is an elementary school. There is Arden. And instead of saying, looking at this plan, saying, okay, 200,000 square feet, it's kind of a lot. You guys are doubling down, making it eight times larger, the 1.6 million square feet, after knowing that an elementary school exists right there in a community. I also want to point out, you don't see it on this particular map, but the way that the map was oriented in, by our, what is it, Ernie? The corner, the very southeast corner is where all the data centers are going to be. And on this map, you can kind of see it here, too. That southwest corner of Arden that looks empty is the school. It's actually less than 1,800 feet from the school, ridiculously close. It's actually less than 1,200 feet from the closest residential home, which is also ridiculous. And what made sense 10 years ago? I would agree, you know, 200,000 square feet for a regular data center probably made sense, but 10 years later, now converting this to be eight times larger, and an AI data center is absolutely crazy, because AI uses a lot more resources. And they pull all the capacity from electrical grids, from irrigation. You heard earlier, it's going to be a closed-loop system for water, but maybe we'll use regular water. Or, okay, right now, we're going to do a noise study after you approve today to increase it. Then we'll do a noise study, and then maybe we'll adjust it after. But that's not what we're asking. Right now, today, they want to ask for the increase for capacity and size. And that's something we should probably think about with the noise study in place before doing, saying yes and saying, all right, okay, we'll figure out the details later. So I think we're kind of out of order out of those two bits. And also talking about capacity demand. It's true, like, certain times of the day, the internet data is used a lot more frequently. And I'm sure everybody knows, prime time is when it, it just jumps. Everyone gets home from work, everyone is off on weekends, holidays, that's when you use the most amount of data. That's when everyone is home. So you're going to have the most amount of consumption of data and sound and noise during prime time, when everyone is home. And making it eight times larger doesn't make any, I feel like it's going backwards. We should keep a smaller capacity, especially with AI in the mix. And I know I'm out of time, but that's my bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Janice Ridenhour.
Morning, everybody. My name is Janice Ridenhour. I'm also an Arden resident, 1102 Arrowhead Point Road. Thank you for having me. My neighbors have said many things, and it's all true, so I'm not going to repeat much of it. I'm going to stick to some other things that haven't been mentioned yet. So if you actually ask AI if it's good to live next to a data center, it will tell you absolutely no. It is not good to live next to a data center for many of the reasons already discussed here. But what was interesting is about the noise pollution. We're talking about the air handlers and the air conditioners making the noise, but it's also the low-frequency noise, and AI itself calls it insidious. It's constant. It never goes away. It's 24/7. So even though FPNL has its moments where it's flushing those towers, we've all heard it, it's not constant. It's not on a constant basis. So this is very unhealthy, obviously. It also says that a data center of this magnitude should not be built within 25 miles of any development, commercial or residential, for a lot of these reasons that we're talking about today. So although it is a good idea, and I think we do need it, and I don't think anyone here is discrediting the need for a data center, the location is not ideal, and there must be another place where it can go. As it was approved in January, I think we can all deal with that, because we're, you know, we're all caring citizens, you know, for the county. But our county also needs to protect the people who live there, and this is not the way to do that. It's going to hurt us very much. The illustrative site plan, the growth potential there, I know that what we're talking about is a right now, and I agree that that 1,900 square feet of warehouse, it'll only be a matter of time before that's also a data center. It also shows a lot of room for additional buildings, okay? And without the master traffic plan, including a Okeechobee extension, I don't know where these trucks and people are going to park and actually get to and from work. The reduction in parking just goes to show you that, you know, the only positive thing about a data center coming to a community is job creation, and you're removing almost 6,000 parking spaces, which is basically, 6,000 people could have parked there, right? So that's not really a benefit to us at all. And let me see if I have anything else. I don't believe I do. But anyway, thank you for hearing me out, and I really hope you object this and keep it as approved in January. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Catherine Cantrell. I live in Arden at 19165 Pemberley Place. You have to excuse me, it's, um, it's getting very close to the anniversary of my husband's death, so I'm a little emotional at this time. My main concern is the noise. I come from New York. She probably can tell by my accent. I have neurological Lyme's disease, which I know a lot of people down here don't understand what that is, but it's kind of like long COVID, and you have it for the rest of your life. You go for months sometimes at a time, not getting any sleep at all, maybe a half hour, 45 minutes. Can you imagine what's going to happen if this is built? The noise that we're going to have to listen to in our community of Arden? They also say that these data centers, they, they up the electrical bills for residents that are around the area. I'm going to fix income. You're going to raise my electric bill even more than what it already is? I have a bad heart. I have to have an air conditioner at all times, or else I'll be sitting in an emergency room. And I just don't think that this is, that this is the right place in which to put it. And as someone said before, this was discussed in 2016, when Arden wasn't there. Well, we're there now, and we want to be heard, and we don't want a data center near our community. Not to mention the fact that, instead of a data center, why don't you give us a fire station with an ambulance? So that if somebody gets hurt, we don't have to wait for a medevac helicopter. Lord knows, like I said, I have a bad heart. I have a bad back. I fell down a flight of stairs. I'm completely disabled. It, this, this thing just doesn't make any sense. Maybe in 2016 it did, but not in 2025. Thank you very much for, for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Next is Michael An.
Good morning. My name is Michael An. I live at 19703 Split Row Run in Arden. I come to you today not as, also as a person that works in industry and the facilities that run 24/7. I want to, as you heard, the issue about noise, in reading the Palm Beach report on this, the industrial standard is 75 dBs, yet the residential standard is much lower. And with this facility being only three football fields away from the residential area, that needs to be taken into consideration that the industrial standard is too high. It's also known that any noise, and this is a facility, data center, that's going to run 24/7 at high dBs of noise, it is known that at 45 dBs or above, it affects your sleep. And so I'd like for you guys to seriously consider that the standard for industry at this close to a residential area is inappropriate. The second area is CO2 emissions. The West County Energy Center is ranked 29th in the country for emitting more than 7.3 billion kilograms of carbon dioxide in 2020. This is equivalent to 1.6 million passenger cars. With this data center, it's going to require power, as you've heard, and it may double the need for power from this power plant. And with the fact that the elementary school is only 2,000 feet, and in the direct prevailing wind current, that's a lot of CO2 that a lot of kids are going to be exposed to. So I'd like for you guys to also consider that fact. The structural height in the report says that these buildings are going to be 75 feet tall. That's seven stories. And that also becomes an architectural issue with affecting the values of the residential area. And it's already been said, data centers don't employ a lot of folks, very low, hence why they can reduce the parking lot space. So the creation of jobs and opportunity, not really there. And then finally, life risk. Right now, it is with the backup power systems and electrical fire potential, and lithium fires, the current best approach to put out a lithium fire is to let it burn. And with the data center, they're going to have backup battery systems if there's a potential fire. That could be a toxic fume for hours going over the community of Arden. So I'd like for you guys to consider that, and hence why the recommendation for data centers like this to be very far away from residential areas.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just give us one minute.
We have one public comment card that says they're not sworn in?
They came late.
Can they be sworn in at this point? Okay, let's bring them up, and we'll swear them in.
Okay, Charles Von Schmidt.
Good morning, Charles Von Schmidt.
Sir, sir, over here.
Good morning.
Can you hold your right hand up, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Charles Von Schmidt. I live at 19982 Egrit Lane. That's just north of Arden. I'm right across the canal from all of this. I'm sorry I wasn't terribly prepared this morning, because I just got wind of this. I didn't get notice. However, I'm kind of appalled that you're thinking about expanding that area over there when they're already violating the regulations of Palm Beach County with regards to noise. I don't know the section, but there's a regulation that says that they're not allowed to make more than 45 decibels, and only between, I think, six, eight, six and six, something like that, during the day. I have measured 90-plus decibels coming from that area at night, all night long, five or six days a week. And I've made complaints about it, nothing's happened about it. So I just want to add to what other people have said, the people living down in Arden, this is going to be a tremendous impact upon us. It already is, and I would appreciate you would consider that it should not be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that all of the cards?
That is all the cards.
Applicant, any, any time?
Yes, thank you again, Ernie Cox.
I could have a card. Although the first one's here, and I haven't had an opportunity to speak. I wonder where my card is.
Hold on, we'll, we'll look for it. What is your name?
Ben Brown. Ernie referred to me earlier.
Oh, I do have it here, I'm sorry.
Come up to the podium.
Yeah, Ben Brown. Ben Brown, 19204 Broadshore Walk, resident of Arden. Surprised you guys forgot my name, but kind of goes along with the theme, I guess, of the beginning, what I'm going to state. Take a look up there, Project Tango. Sounds like a black ops, hidden operation of something. Some may speculate that was done intentionally to hide it from the public, just like the mailer that went out that we all received during Thanksgiving week, when most people are traveling, busy with families, and don't know what's going on. Most of us just caught wind of this within the last four days, I would say. We've been able to mobilize, organize, show up here, get the press involved. It's beyond frustrating, because I don't know how many of you are familiar with that racetrack project that they tried to build across the street from Arden last year? Not surprising. Commissioner Baxter is not in attendance. It's in her district, and as you stated earlier, it's the first potential data center going into the county, but she doesn't even want to be involved with possibly one of the biggest and most important projects that could be built. Curious as to where she is. You know, the other thing is, I've dug into this more, Donna Adelson. You know, the other thing is, I've dug into this more, Donna Adelson, or Adelsberger, I believe, who's running this for the county, this thing makes so little sense and is so wrong, if you ask AI, ChatGPT, Google it, look into it, that the person running it for the county magically is going to retire on December 12th, which is two days after, which I already know you are going to greenlight this, and they're going to do the recommendation for this, she retires two days after this is voted on by the county commissioner, because no one else wants to touch this thing because it's that bad. It makes zero sense. We need to pause this, give the community, give the county, give the residents, and the specialists time to analyze this. There have been no noise studies, there have been no air quality studies. All the other residents here, again, they've made countless great points that you guys all recognize make perfect sense. Things should be 20, 25 miles away, zoom out on that map, there's land for days all the way out to Belgrade, farmland. I'm sure you can work out a deal with, you know, Big Sugar, whoever owns that, whoever wants to get involved, Palm Beach Aggregates can get that all over. The National Wildlife Refuge, Arthur R. Marshall is directly across the street from this as well, that has not been mentioned at all. You know, what kind of considerations have been given to the wildlife and the environmental impacts that may happen across the street there? As we've had references going through, Southern Death Trap, as you all know, three deputies had a tragic accident out there last year, we were trapped in our homes for 14 hours. This plan has been resurrected 10 years after the fact, multiplied out eight, 10 times over, and tried to magically twist it into this spot here so that we can do this data center as supposedly needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I request one more minute? Go ahead. All right, thank you, I appreciate that. So as we go through the noise level, the 75 decibel county ordinance, which is all, that is the only thing the county has looked at in this entire project to give this recommendation. If you look into the details, the CDC is warned against these low-frequency noises that just bombard the residents or anyone within the area. That is not being accounted for because, as stated earlier, this is the first one. So this is the first potential thing that may be built, and we're going off kind of an old standard of noise, have not done a sound variance whatsoever to understand what this could do or will do, or look nationally at the causes of what's already been out there that the CDC is warned against. My children attend Saddleview, which is across, you know, again, a couple thousand feet away from here. We need a fire station, which again, we brought up, lithium fires, good luck. You know, we don't even, it takes more than double the normal county response time for an EMT or a fire truck to get to us. And now you guys want to go ahead and put this out there. So pause this, please, give everyone time to analyze this, this is a whole new breed, whole new animal, do not contort this old, you know, whatever the acronym is for the development into this ugly thing that's going to destroy our community, our children's lives at the school, our property values, and it's going to be terrible for everyone. FPNL can't keep up with the power demand right now. Thank you, your time is up now, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I actually just address one question to the, it's Mr. Brown, right?
Yeah, that's my dad, you can call me Ben.
All right, Ben. The issue why the commissioner's not here, because this is the zoning commission, you're talking about the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, no, I'm very familiar with the whole process, yeah, so, but the thing is, is Commissioner Baxter has been absent, silent, and not responded to this after numerous requests for information on this, that's why I mentioned that, which happened during the racetrack as well, in her backyard.
We're just here to consider, this would be ultimately heard by the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, I know that, which will be on December 10th, and I understand this is basically a done deal, but we're getting all this on the record, because again, Project Tango, the mailer, it looks purposely hidden and nefarious the way it's being done, because it doesn't make sense, no matter how you try to look at it.
All right, thank you. Applicant, you might come back up.
Yes, thank you. Certainly, the concerns about noise that have been raised are concerns that we share, and so we'll be working very hard as we go through that prior to any buildings being built. And I think that's really important. At this stage, the decision on the technology to be used for cooling is a building permit decision, and so what we're working to is the best way to cool the building with the least amount of noise. So we absolutely share that concern and agree that it needs to be addressed, and we will be sure that we address it, and that's why there's a condition in the application. Relative to Florida Power and Light, that power plant is there now, and you heard, you heard there is noise from the power plant that's there today. There's also noise from the asphalt plant and concrete plant. We're working hard to reduce the noise that will come from the site, and we'll be addressing that, certainly understand that. And as I'd mentioned before, I worked on Arden and worked on the school, and that's why the buffers are so important that we talked about. I will be following up with Ben and the folks at Arden, we'll probably do some site visits and work together to address those concerns. Relative to the power usage, that's the PSC and FPL, and so FPL has assured us and others that there'll be plenty of power, one of the benefits of this particular site, and why it was approved for this development to begin with, and why it continues to be a desirable site, is it's right next to the power plant. And so that's a really important piece of this. There will be important, high-paying jobs, not a lot of them, and that's important also primarily because it reduces traffic over the warehouse that would be the alternative on the site. And I think that's, again, an important, I understand the concerns about Southern, and so as we're proposing to rearrange square footage, and I think that's important to understand is that we're not, we're not asking to increase the total number of square footage, we're asking to expand the square footage that's already approved onto 202 acres instead of onto 138 acres, which gives us some additional flexibility and room in terms of how we create buffers and develop the site plan. I'll also say today, the site plan is not before you, today is the Development Order Amendment to add the 64 acres and include it. As we develop the site plan, the concerns that have been raised, I've taken a lot of notes, I'll follow up, I'll get out on site with those folks, and we will work to improve on the site plan as we go through that future process. And then finally, relative to the parking variance, because the, as you all know, the first item is your recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners on the DOA Amendment, which is to reallocate the square footage to the total site. That's a recommendation, and we're asking for your recommendation of approval on that item. The second item, which is simply the reduction in parking required, currently that reduction applies to the 138 acres, we're asking that it apply to the entire 202. I would hate to see 6,000 empty parking spaces paved over on the site, so we would ask, that is, that is one that you have final authority on, which is the variance, so we would ask that you apply the reduction in parking variance to the whole 202 acres. And again, thank you, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a couple, two different topics, Mr. Cox.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. I'm concerned about, let me do water first, I have two areas, water and noise. In the documents, it's, you've got a water reservation from Palm Beach County Utilities for 5,600 gallons per month, which is the human use on the property, I'm assuming. Where is your initial coolant water coming from? Do you have plans for that yet? And where are the replenishments coming from?
Yeah, so, so we're still working on that technology, there are some current technologies that would not use any water. And it's, you're going to get above my technical abilities, but there's immersion cooling that's being developed that doesn't use water at all. So if that is the technology that's used in the building, we won't be needing any more water beyond the current amount. That's my personal preference, for all the reasons that have been discussed. If that immersion doesn't work, it would be a closed-loop system, the initial indications that we have for the amount of water which would be needed for the closed-loop system is that it can be met within that current capacity.
Within the 5,600.
Currently, and again, that would be my second choice. And then the third choice is if it's determined that we do need additional water, we are exploring with Palm Beach County Water Utilities, the ability to use gray water. As you know, there's a 24-inch, 36-inch line that runs from the ECR plant to the FPL plant. We would need to work with FPL if we need that, because certainly none of us want to use potable water for the cooling here.
And it's not your intention to use, to go get an air appeal to put another well in on site?
No, we would not intend to use a well. The one other alternative that might be there is, as you know, we've worked on the C-51 reservoir. There was a time period, I don't know, five or six years ago, where the water quality from the ECR plant was not working for FPL, and so we put in a temporary pipe into the C-51 reservoir. That water quality is good, that would require an additional permit, so that's kind of way down the list. But the benefit, if that were to occur, is that the water that goes into the C-51 reservoir is reducing the damaging discharges to tide into the Lake Worth Lagoon, and so, again, way afield, but if that were the outcome, we would take water that would otherwise be discharged to the Lake Worth Lagoon, store it in the reservoir, use it for cooling, but that's kind of item number five, and that would require additional permitting.
Okay, thank you. And the next question is for noise. We've had testimony, sworn testimony here today, from a gentleman who said that he's measured 90 dB on his property now with just background noise. That's concerning, and I'm also concurrently concerned that there's been no reach out from your organization to the Arden community prior to the mailing of the flyer. I think noise is a data center, I mean, everyone knows data centers are noisy, I would have expected some reach out prior to this process to help educate the community and to measure background noises as they already exist. If you guys are going to be adding additional noises, that is a big concern, I don't know how you're going to get less than, less than the county's requirement, by the way, the county's requirement is 60 dB on residential, to reach residential property, I'm looking at the code right now, it's 60 dB for 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 55 dB, 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM, 50 dB from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and that's on Table 7.8-1. And so if the noise levels are already exceeding that, that means you guys are going to essentially have to have this whole acreage be quiet. And your last approval included the elimination of the wall incompatibility buffer. There was an elimination, there was a waiver for the Type 3 incompatibility buffer on the east side of the property. So, and you only have 95 feet setback on that side. So I'm asking you, is, as the applicant, are you guys willing to consider putting a berm over there and a sound wall? Because this is, this is, this is the biggest impact to the adjacent residential community. And they're not immediately adjacent, they're not technically adjacent because there's a canal and a roadway in between, but they are the adjacent community and part of your overall development there, so.
So maybe take them one at a time? So this was my first knowledge today of the readings of the 90 dB, so I'll make sure I meet the gentleman afterwards, get his information, get his data, and take a look at to see where it's coming from, because that was news to me. So that's number one. Two, we'll be doing very detailed studies, including background studies, as we get going to this. This project has evolved pretty quickly, we've been working with the Business Development Board, and as you all know, the project language, whether it's Project Tango or Project whatever it is, that's under the Florida Business Development, so we've been working closely with Kelly Smallridge, so it's happened pretty quickly in terms of how all these pieces have come together. So I'm in the process, I talked to Ben last night, just met him in person this morning, we'll be following up with him and doing a site visit, I know he represents, working with the HOA. And then to your final question, whether it's landscaping, or sound buffers, or walls, we're absolutely open to that, and our intent is to not have a negative impact upon Arden from a sound perspective.
I would suggest working with staff on presenting some language for conditions of approval for that for the BCC. I mean, this is-
Yeah, we'll work on that.
This is the biggest issue for the residential development, yes, water is an issue, but honestly, Palm Beach County Utilities is the limiting factor on that, because that's where you're going to get the water. But the noise is the biggest issue, and I would recommend that that language be worked out quickly to improve that condition of approval so that the residents are not impacted.
Yeah, no, we'll work together with staff and come up with something for the BCC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, any other questions?
I would like to address that, what I'm listening after this long meeting is that we have two universe, two parallel universe, that the residents of the community, which is a huge community, almost a city, are presenting one reality, and the applicant is another world. And I cannot, as a human, to understand how come two realities can be close? How come you or we as a county, we will have a huge data center with all the things that we know, and you have next to a community full of people? I really don't, it's like a book, it's like a utopia that it doesn't make any sense for me as a zoning commissioner. This is like, how come we got, no, 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 please don't, 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 because my responsibility as a commissioner representing a community is to understand how you put together development, business, money, progress, and people. And this is, it doesn't make any sense. My next question is, because we cannot talk about parking, what is the point to have less parking if we have noise, if we have people going to the schools? How come we are talking about, oh, we can make a less noise when we know it's impossible? Because we have millions. Now, my next question to all of us is, can we stop this? Can we pause this? Or we are just here listening the next Netflix series? That's my question.
If I could jump in for a minute, this is Brian Davis of Planning, I can give you a little bit of context, given how this is, because what you're seeing is a policy that is, was formulated more than 20 years ago by the county commission, but the Glades Air Protection Overlay you've heard of, that was originally improved in 2004, that was a line in the sand, if you will, the L-8 canal was the line in the sand, that's what used to be talked about. Everything east of the L-8 was supposed to have some sort of residential development, that's why there was initially 1,200 units and now 2,000 units that became Arden. But the west of the line, that was supposed to be for these other uses that were transitions to the Glades communities. Initially, even before you had the Glades Air Protection Overlay put into place, there was a mining approval out there, that was a mining operations, it was already a loud, noisy, whatever. That was approved back in 1989. The Glades Air Protection Overlay said that mining use was fine, other uses that were for environmental restoration and whatnot. It was 2016 when this Economic Development Center was put on the west side, because in 2005, you had the approval for, by the Public Service Commission, for the FPL mine, or not mine, the power plant. So you already had these things out there that were noisy, loud, whatever uses, that were already there, already approved. And so what you saw for Arden, that was conceived of back in 2004, was a site design that took that excess, you know, material from the mine that was not needed for the mining operations, it was deposited there as sand, it was contoured in a way to create the berm and that interior bowl, so there was an attempt to, for that community, to- an attempt to, for that community, to help site it and to address the realities of what was already approved and what was there when that got constructed. So what you are seeing is a world in which Arden was already afforded, because it was the second or third player, if you will, to arrive on the scene. That's why Arden is the way it is. They are now back. The County Commission has made policy steps, as recently as earlier this year, when they adopted this change to expand the EDC, to allow for a data center among other uses, which that had been talked about as long as 2015, 2016. So the policy created the world we're in. It also attempted to make that be that edge of the world, the line in the sand of where everything stopped. It did everything it could. The problem was, as you heard from the gentleman on Egrit Lane, the issue there was, they were already there, there wasn't really anything that could be done, because we did not really have a say on the FPL plant. That was one of those, you met the state criteria, you got the state approval. And so that they've had to deal with that. I don't know that there's something there, but you already have these so-called nuisance uses there that generate use. This is just another thing. So this is an attempt to congregate in group all of those uses in a place where they do the least overall impact to anyone. So you have those impacts already there. This is just another thing that is out there that would come to it. So that's the intent of the policy that's adopted, the decisions the county has made over time.
Yeah, but thank you for your clarification, but what? And then we just keep going and mixing people, suffering this. At the end, nobody can live there. What if the people bought houses there and now they live with this because we have a policy saving data centers? And that, my point is, yes, there is a different years, but today we have a reality, and we should be responsible for that.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Sorry, go ahead.
My observation is, in listening to this, I understand what you're saying and what the applicant and what the neighborhood is saying. But at this point, it's more analysis that the applicant has to go through. At this point, they're only asking us to do two things. Yeah, he has to find out about a buying mill. Yes, you got to go through about noise study. Yes, they got to, there's a whole lot to do before they even start construction, that would take into account everything that the neighbors have talked about, everything. And that's usually how the process goes. You start here, they come in and ask us to do two things, add park conveyance and to add additional land and just to take what was already approved, square footage rights and just expand it. So it's not action. So my whole thing is, I don't disagree with anything anybody's saying, but at what point do the county, I'm not understanding the county process completely, they go in and look at some stuff like that and then make sure some of those issues are mitigated?
Commissioner Comer, did you have a question?
Did you want an answer, though, to your question?
Not necessarily. I mean, necessarily.
Okay. What is the noise level that would apply here? Is it the industrial level or the residential?
So in Article 5, we have different receiving land uses. So in the case of this development, the receiving land use would be Arden, which has residential and civic uses on it. So the residential receiving areas have maximum in the urban service area and the rural service area of 60 decibels as it relates to fixed mechanical equipment. And generators is 75 decibels. And other noises for residential between different hours of operation range from 50 to 60.
So that's within the Arden community?
The receiving, that would be the receiving.
So that would apply to the noise level that...
It's created by this proposal.
Okay. And what is the industrial level?
Industrial to industrial, the receiving land use being the non-residential use is 75.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Vinacor?
I'm well familiar with the GAPO. And of course, through the years, being on planning and being on Eldrab, I've been through many of these text amendments and all. I understand that, I do believe Arden was officially opened in 2017, and probably the real estate agents would have told the people that what was next door, especially when people would ask. I've been out there. I know very well that C-51 canal, we had a tour of that. And I think that that should be one of the things up on, higher on your list, using that C-51 canal. That would be good. As far as the fire station, a mile east of Arden, one is planned. We don't have anybody from fire rescue here, but I do recall that. And however, it doesn't really, it would be great if it could be expedited. And maybe that's something that the developer could ask for, request, maybe help with that. Because their times are about twice as long, as the average being 6 minutes and 40 seconds or so. So the closest one is five and a half miles now. So it takes a little while to get there. I understand they need three emergency calls a day. But if you can expedite that and help and maybe help to fund a fire station, it would also help this development. I am mostly very concerned about having a berm and a sound wall. I'm not quite sure if that would be high enough. But maybe the construction of the building, a Leeds building, or some way of having zero, zero amount of decibels coming out of there. Is there some possible way with new engineering and all? That's most of my comments here. And just one thing, that the warehouse, ultimately, it's 1,900 square feet of warehouse, correct?
Correct.
And that parking is not going to change?
Warehouse parking and office parking does not change. The variance is solely for data center.
Yeah, for the 1,792,000 square feet of data center. Okay. If we don't, if we made them have the same amount of parking as the warehouse does, then how much would that cut down on building square footage of a data center?
Repeat it again?
Yes. If we did not approve this resolution to approve the reduction in parking, how many square feet of a data center would be decreased?
I couldn't tell you. I didn't analyze that, but they would end up having 6,000 more parking spaces plus for the 1 million, because the calculation for the data information processing is one space for every 250 square feet. So you'd have an enormous amount of parking and pavement.
Right. So I'm sure that the applicant can answer that question, because that, because parking lot or building, how much building space would you lose?
Well, what we would do in that circumstance is we would build massive parking garages and have 6,000 empty spaces in a parking garage.
You'd build parking garages. Okay.
Again, it's just...
Commissioner...
Thank you.
So, yeah, this has been a great discussion, a lot of good comments from all sides. And kind of going back, that we are today just asked to look at the variance for the parking and for the request to add the square footage. But I think with that, there has to be a lot of due diligence that you still need to do to coordinate with the residents. And you had mentioned the cooling technology, and thanks for, Commissioner Kennedy, for bringing some of those things up. But you had said you would determine that. But when would you determine those systems? And not only on the cooling, but also on the decibels? You were talking about looking at that. But at what point are you going to analyze those and come up with a factor that makes sense that maybe is amenable to the neighborhood?
Yeah. So short answer, that is the analysis that we're going through on the building itself. We've got probably about $10 million worth of engineering and architectural that needs to be done before we're ready to build the building. And so if you think about what we're here today on is parking, do I need to build massive parking garages with empty spaces? Or, which we're hoping not, because we think it's best not to build garages for spaces. So we need, we're here at this group to say variance on parking. So that gives us direction for that architectural work that'll be done. And then the second is the condition requiring the noise study analysis related to the building, because the land itself isn't adding any noise. So the horizontal doesn't change that. So what we think would work is, we've got a staff condition already that requires that study. I think the additional language that could be recommended by this board for consideration by the County Commission would be to also look at things like additional landscaping, using buildings to mask sound, potential sound walls. They're not attractive, but they work along I-95. And that would be part of a recommendation. It would go into actually the building permit stage of the project.
Okay. And then I think to the generators would be, perhaps create more noise than the buildings themselves. So how would you, and those are outside, so I don't know if you would study that as well, I suppose?
We would study the whole thing, including what is the current noise coming from the power plant? The power plant's there today, was approved prior to all of this, so it's generating noise today. So part of the study is to understand that. And so if you think about west to east, we have a 3,800-megawatt power plant, then vacant land, whoops, sorry, vacant land. So that, nothing is stopping that noise from going from the power plant. So we're now going to be putting a series of buildings in there. So part of the study is, depending upon the configuration and the construction materials of those buildings, can those buildings actually keep the sound and send it west, as opposed to the sound sending east? And then absolutely committed to, if there is a need to put a sound wall, like you see along the Turnpike or I-95, we'll look at that, too. I mean, our objective is not to have angry Arden residents because of the noise. And so we're going to work through that. But that's at the building permit stage, not at the parking variance or BCC reconfiguration stage.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Caliendo?
Yeah, just briefly. I think we're, some of us were going in the wrong direction here. And the fact that they can't go anywhere with this sound issue until they've applied for permitting or so on. So expecting them to spend $10 million to go produce a study for an if-to-come building wouldn't be reasonable for the application. But the parking situation, for sure, is, to me, makes great sense, because building a stacked parking garage and creating a hollow tunnel creates even more sound of an empty parking garage. So I don't think there's any choice, if we're going to entertain the project, to entertain the approval of the parking situation.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I echo my colleague over there that explained why Mayor Baxter isn't here. So thank you for that. But I also wanted to discuss some of the things that happened. I echo also what you're saying, which I was going to say about the parking garage. I feel like that would create more noise, and also what's in front of us. So while I always encourage speech, free speech, I scream it from the rooftops, I will say that we have a set parameter that we have to follow as this commission. And we have to do what is in front of us now. And so if you want to further speak, I encourage you to go to the county commissioners' office, or meeting, and echo the same things that you're discussing here. They have more flexibility, if you will, as elected officials. But I just wanted to let you know that what's in front of us is what we have to vote on, under parameters that are given to us, and that's all.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion?
I have another question, though, for the county. So I think the residents have raised legitimate issues with regards to the location and the noise. And we don't have evidence on which to base it. So please, just let me know, what is the exit ramp here? If we were to approve this, how do the residents deal with this legitimately, with regards to their legitimate noise concerns? Who addresses that down the road?
Okay. So I definitely wanted to clarify something first, which is their request. Ernie, unfortunately, you mentioned that this request was to add 64 acres, and it isn't. The 64 acres was already added. So the total acreage is 202. So I want to point that out, that this isn't adding land area. Now, the ordinance from the land use application did include 3-plus million square feet in it. The master plan currently is 2,000,000. They are adding square footage for this master plan approval. So that is, one of the requests is to add square footage for the master plan. The site plan is reviewed administratively. So with the addition of the square footage included in that request, because this is an MUPD, we have to analyze the noise and the sound and the water and the concurrency. They have the letter from Water Utilities on their proposed lines. Final concurrency is done when they site plan it. So when they do that site planning, we will have all the information for the water as well. And then after that, when they go in for permits, they sign their final agreements with Water Utilities. So I at least want to put that out there. So right now, the request that you have before you is a variance to reduce parking for a data center use, to modify that calculation from 1 per 250 to 1 per 2,000. So that's the request. And you make that final decision on that request. The other request, to modify the master plan, to add square footage and to increase, and change the phasing, because they're proposing a four-phased development, that is a recommendation. You provide your recommendation, along with any additional conditions or modified conditions based on the testimony that's here, based on what we have presented, what the applicant has presented. You can add conditions, modify those conditions, or delete those conditions as part of a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, in which they make that final decision on the development order amendment. Does that help or clarify?
Sounds like we have to consider the noise issue, then.
You can, yes, you can.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll motion to adopt a resolution approving item 4A.
Second?
The parking?
Parking.
That's 4A, item 4A. All in favor?
Of the parking, aye.
Opposed?
I'm not. Can I be not? Okay, no.
Okay, we have one opposed. On item 4B?
Now, I motion to recommend approval of item 4B with taking, additionally, with adding conditions for mitigating the sound issue. And is that enough? And the attorney can tell me.
Yeah, it's probably semantics, but you're not actually adding conditions, you're recommending...
Recommending to add conditions, mitigating the noise issue. And that's as far as I need to go with the motion. But just to clarify, there were a lot of different ideas, so...
Yeah, and I think staff and the applicant are aware of what still needs to be worked on, based on the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Yes.
Me. Two opposed. Motion passes.
I missed, who was the second?
Those two.
Who was the second?
Oh, who seconded it?
Who seconded?
Yeah, I have Vinacor as the motion. Who did the second? I didn't hear.
We have Commissioner Mendoza and Commissioner Comer.
No, no, no. Commissioner, you seconded it. Okay, thank you.
And let me just state for the record, the reason for my opposition is I don't think sufficient evidence was presented with regards to the noise mitigation. I think that can be addressed, just we don't have sufficient evidence to have heard that.
I guess, just for the record, which criteria do you believe that would fall under?
Well, I'll have to look through the criteria, but it's basically compatibility with the surrounding areas.
Okay, let's move on to item 5 on the regular agenda.
Okay. Item 5 is DOA 2025-00739, the American Heritage School. We have two requests before the board, which include a development order abandonment, but no motion will be necessary. That final decision is by the Board of County Commissioners, and a development order amendment, in which you would make a recommendation. in which you would make a recommendation. We will turn it over to the applicant for a presentation, and then followed by staff.
Thank you. For the record, Joanie Brinkman with Urban Design Studio. I do have with me here today our consultant team as well as legal counsel. We also had quite a bit of public outreach on this application. I know there are representatives here from Kings Point as well that most likely will have comments after my presentation. Do I need to wait, or are we okay with a couple of people taking a break?
You can proceed. You can proceed.
On behalf of the American Heritage School, it's been a long morning so far. I'll kind of skim through some of these.
Can you come just a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
Okay. It's been a long morning. I'll try to skim through some of these. My first couple of slides really just tell a little bit about American Heritage and the prestige they have, not only in the state of Florida, but throughout the United States as a private school, the amount of scholars and college-bound students, the amount of AP classes and passing rates that they have. So I will skim through those. This is just another one. They are ranked number one college prep in the nation by NICH, which is a ranking organization that ranks private schools and universities throughout the country. Again, I'm just going to skim through these. More information about the awards that they have achieved over the years. They did have 62 nationally recognized scholars, which is a huge accomplishment for a school of this size in the state of Florida. To get to the application itself, American Heritage School is existing. It's located on the south side of Linton Boulevard, east of Jog Road. To the north is Kings Point, which, as I mentioned, we have been in discussions with them in regards to the impact of our student increase. There is residential to the east and west and south, as well as a non-residential medical office to the, for lack of a better word, northeast area. This gives you a better idea of the existing campus. This request actually only includes the addition of one permanent building that is currently occupied on the site by a modular structure, so that would be replaced. All other buildings are already approved on the site plan. We would be demolishing one building in the southeast corner there to allow for additional parking. Access to the site is from Linton Boulevard and from 60th Avenue on the east side, also from Linton Boulevard, and we'll get into queuing here in a bit. Here are some representative photos of the facilities of the school itself and the buildings. That's the main entry, which is signalized coming on off of Linton Boulevard. The entryway into the actual campus once you get interior. I know I would be remiss if I did not point out something that's been pointed out in every one of Dr. Lori's presentations to neighbors, that they do have an electron microscope, one of the three in the entire state of Florida in a educational facility. They're very proud of the different academic programs they offer there at the school. As I mentioned, this is our approved site plan. The changes to this are minimal, associated with the increase in the student count. This is the actual request we are before you today for, which is increasing the student count from 1,639 to 2,500. We are abandoning the daycare use itself because the daycare use is actually pre-K3 and 4, which are considered students. They have a license from the Department of Health for a substantial compliance. They're not actually considered a daycare, although our site has been constructed and will continue to remain in its current situation where we are complying with all the daycare requirements as far as drop-off spots and things like that. Again, the red box you see is where there is currently a modular structure they're utilizing. At some point in time, it will be replaced with an actual building, two-story, 10,400 square feet. And we are obviously deleting conditions of approval and modifying some within the development order to reflect the daycare use going away. In regards to community outreach, I'll put my glasses on to read this. We have been in contact with the Business Development Board. They recognize that private schools and the availability for enrollment in attracting businesses from out of state is a very integral component of that goal. So we have been in contact with them. The Alliance of Delray, we met with in October, October 19th. At their request, we also sent a courtesy notice to Delray Medical Center, just so they were aware. We have not, as far as I know, heard back from them. We met with the Lakes of Delray, November 10th. Kings Point, again, on November 3rd, and continue to have ongoing discussions with them. Also notified the medical office to the west and have been dealing with individual homeowners in Vintage Oaks, Mizner's Preserve to the south, and also have coordinated with Drexel One of the things that has been the most concerned is queuing and drop-off and pickup times in traffic, obviously, for schools. It impacts not only private schools, but public schools as well throughout the county. What this slide shows you is the drop-off and pickup for elementary and high school, which are staggered. The red elementary drop-off comes in off of 60th from Linton Boulevard, and I don't have a pointer, but you'll see how long that stacking is. It actually equates to about 90 cars on campus. And the high school, which again is at a different time, they can accommodate approximately 100 cars on campus. As part of our coordination with Kings Point and the county and staff, there are some conditions of approval, including the development order in regards to physical improvements out in the right-of-way to help improve the queuing even on Linton Boulevard. The first one being that we are to extend the left-hand turn lane west approach into the signalized entrance to the school to the maximum extent possible, which I'll get into that in a little bit here. And the same thing, extending the queuing and the stacking for the left-hand turn on entering the site from 60th. As well as extending the right-hand turn lane eastbound approach into 60th on Linton And based on discussions with Kings Point, their concerns were getting out of their right-in, right-out was getting out on the Linton Boulevard so that they could make a U-turn and go back east. So we have worked with county staff. There's a condition of approval in the development order regarding striping that area as a do-not-block-the-box and providing additional pavement markings so that if they are coming out, they would be able to get into the left-hand turn lane into the queue. We are also improving the main driveway as far as exiting and adding a dedicated left-hand turn lane and one shared right-left, left-right turn lane is being added. And operational changes that we're proposing, school staff, which they have already begun positioning to prohibit left-hand turns coming out of 60th onto Linton, and also staffing people at the entrance to the roundabout there, making sure it doesn't block traffic. That is an access point that people use to get to Publix. And an additional thing they've also started is opening the gates up a little bit earlier in the day, and that's already, even under today's enrollment, has improved the situation as well. Just as an example of how much coordination has taken place between us, the neighbors, and staff, this would have been on last month's add/delete, but you'll see where we are increasing, originally it was 470 feet, now we're increasing the west approach turn lane at 60th to 600 feet, and again, adding the do-not-block-the-box to the condition. That being said, staff has reviewed the report. They have determined that we are consistent with all the standards required for the Development Order Amendment. They are recommending approval of the request. And that is my conversation. Yes, there is one other condition that we are working on between now and Board of County Commission, and that is with engineering, and that is the potential to add a signal at 60th, which would channelize the left-hand turn lanes in and the right-hand turn lane. That would also provide some relief because it would stop traffic there for Flanders and Kings Point to get out. That is in discussions right now, staff. We're hoping that will be resolved prior to the BCC and included in that development order.
Okay, thank you. Staff, any addition?
I don't, we don't have anything in addition to what was presented.
Comments from Public?
Yes, we have two comment cards.
Disclosures?
Oh, I'm sorry, again, I missed disclosure on this one. Let's start to my left. Any disclosure on item five?
None.
None. I spoke to Scott Bachman and the Heritage Team, and many folks at Kings Point, including the management, and Captain Morales of PBSO.
None.
None?
None.
None.
Okay. We may proceed with the comment cards.
Yes, so I'll call your name. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to state your comments. So Stephen Wolf.
Hi, I was told I should, I have something to submit. I should give it to somebody by the woman, the woman who I gave the card to?
Motion to receive and file.
Is it the letter that came out, or is it something else?
It's some supporting documentation. I'm just going to speak for 60 seconds and then...
Okay, yeah. Motion to accept this?
Motion to receive and file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Stephen Wolf, and I live at 5864 Vintage Oaks Circle, less than 200 feet from the football field of the school. For the past year and a half, noise from activities on the field has been clearly audible inside every room of my house, despite hurricane-impact windows throughout the house, and I've spent about $15,000 trying to mitigate the sound from the school over the last year. I raised this issue with the school for more than a year, but they did not begin responding until recently with this zoning application was being considered. They've said they plan to install a new and quieter sound system, which I appreciate very much, but there still has been no independent evaluation of the actual level of the problem or what mitigation might be required. I have neighbors also who have expressed similar concerns. Because the school is seeking to increase its enrollment by 860 students, it's important, I think, to establish a clear understanding of the existing noise impact and the measures needed to ensure compliance with county standards. I'm not an acoustic expert, but I do have an iPhone with an app, and I've, just so you know, because I know you're concerned about noise, I've measured over 100 decibels at times on my phone, and even as recently as a few weeks ago, it was about 80 decibels on my property. So I respectfully request that any approval include a condition requiring the applicant to fund an independent third-party acoustic study using a consultant selected or approved by your county staff to measure noise at nearby homes and determine the extent to which noise levels exceed county limits and identify the mitigation needed to ensure compliance. This would provide everyone involved, including the school and the county, with clear, objective information going forward. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Wolf. What type of sound are you getting? You said from the football field?
Yes, by far the worst of it is the PA system. So they will block, broadcast, they had speakers directed...
So that's like...
Can I point here?
That's a code enforcement issue because there are, you know, you sat here through the last year and you see that there are standards in the county for noise levels. Okay, and if you believe that have been exceeded, you can call the code enforcement.
I have.
And what's been the response?
It's a school, and there are people there, and they make noise.
Well, there's a difference between people being there and sound systems.
I'm just telling you, as a resident of Florida, you have the opportunity. Apparently, the school is very interested in expanding their students, and I understand the county is very interested in having them expand the school. I think those are good things. I'm not trying to stop that, but right now, you have an opportunity to get the school to agree to at least look at the problem, and within the scope of such a large expansion, I don't think that's such a big ask. And if we can get the school to agree just to abide by the existing rules, I'd be happy with that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Gregory McAlune.
Gregory McAlune, on behalf of Kings Point Recreation Corporation. With me today is Lisa Manzio and Bonnie Leffkowitz, members of the Board of Kings Point Recreation Corporation. So, oh, address is 6111 Broken Sound Parkway Northwest, Suite 200, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm with the Law Firm of Saks, Saks and Kaplan. We represent generally Kings Point Association, which consists of approximately 7,200 units and about 12,000 residents. It's a large area. They've been in the community a very long time. It's a very established community. What we're trying to focus on today is a singular issue of conflict at Flanders Way and Linton Boulevard. This is a life, safety, and traffic issue, and this expanded proposal will create additional conflicts that we're looking to mitigate. It was stated that community outreach did occur. That only occurred after, you know, one of the board members found out about this through neighborhood discussions, and it was then postponed here. Since then, we've had a very open dialogue, and I do appreciate the applicant for engaging in that dialogue subsequent to postponement, and we have made progress. As mentioned, there's been some additional items that were included that we believe will help mitigate the life, safety effects that will incur through the increased student capacity that they're proposing to take place. Really, what I want to then narrow down the issue on is making a right out of Flanders Way, and I want to confirm that the board did receive the letter from Ms. Manzio regarding the relevant information and materials. And essentially, that outlines the position. Residents exiting Kings Point, Egress and Ingress Point right there with it, make a right out to go westbound on Linton and to go eastbound on Linton, they have to make a U-turn right there. There's only about stacking for three cars right there, and actually, it occurred recently, there was a fatal, or within the past few years, a fatality occurred at that intersection. We have younger students driving fast, all of that as well, we understand, and there's got to be an increased capacity for that to occur. The only item remaining that we would like to see addressed is implementation of traffic signalization at the intersection of Flanders Way and Linton Boulevard. The proposed staff condition that's been in discussion has been a proposed signalization at 60th. We don't think this is going to be able to mitigate the effects of getting into the left turn lane to be able to make a U-turn in order to go eastbound on Linton. Queuing could occur to where they're stacking in that left turn lane, and residents can't make that right out to be able to go in. If the light was at Flanders Way and Linton Boulevard, there'd be the adequate space. I know they mentioned that there's a do-not-block. 16-year-old kids in these cars are not going to abide by that. I'm just telling you, it's not going to happen. What we'd really like to see is a light right there manned by a police officer who's able to control it only during school hours. This light doesn't have to be operable during off-school hours, or it could be in a constant green or a flashing state, but during school hours, we'd like to see the light at that intersection manned by a police officer in order to allow residents to make the right turn out to be able to go then make a U-turn and go eastbound on Linton. That is our request. We request that as a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions, commissioners?
I have a couple of questions. So, I'm sorry, I can't tell, where was the light on 69th? Can you show me where?
On 60...
On 69th, the one that's proposed, right?
Currently exists.
Yes. Okay, if you could just...
Yes, sir. So, this is the Kings Point Flanders entrance right here. There's currently an existing light right here. What happens is residents make a right out, immediately go to the left lane, and then make a U-turn at this light. We would like to see the light at this portion right here. This would allow this to remain unblocked and allow residents to make a right out and then a U-turn here. Through discussions, we understand county staff is trying to implement the light over here, and we appreciate the consideration. The issue... The issue is this left turn lane is gonna be extended out pretty much to this light, if this light's red, this light's red, you're gonna have stacking and queuing issue right here to where residents can't make the right out and make a U-turn. If the light was right here, there'd be the...
If the light was right here, there'd be the open area to where then they could adequately make a right out manned by a police officer who could enforce certain limits, so we don't have that issue of conflicts and speeding for the most part, because again, we've all been there, we understand, you know, how drivers operate within this type of realm with it. But essentially, we really would just like to make sure residents could safely and adequately make the right turn out in order to make an U-turn to go eastbound on Linton, and we don't believe a traffic light right here satisfies the concern. That's not to say we don't appreciate the efforts the applicant and the county has made in order to get to this point, this is just the final issue that we would like to resolve prior to this moving forward.
And, I'm sorry, just a follow-up question, so there would be two lights really close together, right then, so you'd have one at 69th, and you'd have one, so, as traffic looked at that to see what the, because wouldn't that need to be reviewed by traffic too, to see if that made sense, or?
Good morning, my name is Moshi Roman, Traffic Division, yes, those only, I think, around 350 feet apart from both driveway and the signal, that is very close for a signal. So, and with the signal at 60, I think they will have the gap to make right turn.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question, wouldn't that gap only exist if the signals were timed correctly?
Yes.
Well, essentially, what we would like to see is that these signals only be operable during peak school hours with it, so it wouldn't create this gapping issue for residents driving through off-hours, this would only be in effect during school pickup and drop-off hours with it.
You're talking about your proposed one in front of Kings Point?
Correct, at Flanders and Linton.
But the applicant's proposed one at Sixtieth?
Sixtieth.
Sixtieth, that gap in the stacking lane would only occur if the timing was correct between the existing entrance and the new light at Sixtieth, because otherwise, it would just be a stacked lane that...
That's our concern, is the stacking, if the American Heritage Entrance Light is red, and it stacks all the way back to Sixtieth, we're left in the same position that currently exists today. Residents can't get the right out to the left turn lane to make a U-turn. That's the effect we're looking to mitigate. We think that the light is the best proposal to do so, but the overarching concern is the life safety aspect of residents making a right out to get to the far-left lane in order to make a U-turn, and mitigating those life safety effects.
Right, but my, but my point is, is that the, the traffic condition can be that the lighting scheme is correct to allow the elimination, the, the emptying of the stacking lane between Sixtieth and the, and the American Heritage Line, to allow for the people on Kings Point to actually effectively get out.
But the, the traffic would have to be timed in such a way to where then it would only allow X amount of cars before the Kings Point entrance and...
But that's gonna happen with any traffic light, I'd like staff to answer my...
Yes, you're right.
And, and, and is that, like, wording in a condition that can be put in, so that with the, I mean, the, it's the timing that's gonna be the issue on that stacking lane?
Yeah, but how do you put that into scenario?
Also, who's the one that clicks on? And, I mean, is that a timer set? I don't know that much about traffic lights.
No, there's a stacking set too, but there's a distance in between these, between these lights, that's, that...
But are you proposing your light in lieu of their light, their traffic light?
Instead of Sixtieth.
But still too close together.
That doesn't, that doesn't help the...
And maybe I could answer, instead of the traffic signalization, what we were envisioning is a manned police officer there during school hours who would be able to physically operate it. This would mitigate the effects of speeders going in, it would also not have to worry about the timing issue, because we'd have a human being there be able to see and allow Kings Point residents to safely access that left turn lane, and we have discussed this with applicant, you know, so we've made all of these items, you know, known from our perspective with it, and we see that as the best mitigating effect, is a manned light during school hours, which then could allow passengers to safely cross lanes to U-turn.
I have a question for the applicant. Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Good morning.
He said he's had these conversations, is the school willing to pay and put that as a part of a condition?
Yeah, so we've been having active, ongoing dialogue, the school is open to whatever the, the collective parties here agree makes sense, is reasonable, and is safe, so...
If you put a amber blinking light there most of the day, and then all you have to do is turn that on or off, when a police officer was standing there, that would mitigate the problem.
Sure, and the question becomes, it's a signal, who's going to be responsible, who's going to operate? We have no objection to paying for the installation of the signal, to hiring a Palm Beach County Sheriff's Officer to do so during those windows of time. These, these discussions, I think they started at Kings Point a little over a month ago, they've been ongoing, traffic engineering reached out to my office a couple of days ago and mentioned this, what they call a school signal, which I understand would kinda work the same way, but only flash and would operate during, you know, the peak school hours at Sixtieth. We're fine with it there, we're fine with it outside the Kings Point Flanders Gate, wherever it makes the most sense, what we understood was what's been discussed here today, which is that at the Flanders Gate, it might be a little too close to the existing signal. I want to be very clear, the school understands the safety concerns that are being raised by Kings Point, and whatever, all of the various experts, including our traffic engineer and our civil engineer working with the county, think is the right solution, the school is willing to incorporate.
Why don't we put something into our approval that states the fact that the applicant will work with the county to, and, and the staff to come up with a situation to devise, a sheriff's signal, and a police officer?
Commissioner Benicore?
Yes, and this is a interesting, interesting that we have this difference between our, what we just heard with the previous application and this one. Here we have a community that's been there for decades, and decades, and this school being there, that's great, and everybody likes that and great education that they give, but they, they are putting a lot of stress on these residents that have been living there for decades. So I think that, that this is an excellent suggestion, and I would, I would, I would support if this light were to be at Flanders. Our county administrator presented to our group a few months ago, and he stressed the point that there is going to be this incredible AI that's coming to all the traffic signaling throughout the county. So between what's going to happen with AI and with possibly using a sheriff's officer there, I think that this could work out, but I would, I would support the application to, with, as long as this traffic light is at Flanders, I don't think it's going to help anything being at Sixtieth.
I would like to say, just checking that at this time today, with the number of students, we have these issues, isn't it? Yep, we have the issue these days, as per the residents, that they need to drive and that, and you are increasing the students, because it's part of the documents that we have, and it's gonna be worse. I just want to be sure that I understood, that we have a heavy traffic now, and it will be heavier, and then we need that solution, that we are, that we need to go ahead before it will be worse than it's now.
Yeah, I think that's all generally fair, obviously, I mean, the AM drop-off in particular is during the rush hour, and so you've got the intermingled traffic with drop-off for the school, and then obviously, rush hour traffic on Linton, and so traffic does get heavy. A lot of the other improvements that are being proposed over and above the signal that we're talking about are doubling, tripling, and in some cases, more, the turn lanes that are into the school, both in the eastbound and the westbound direction, so that obviously will help exacerbate that a little bit as well, and then, and then the signal itself. The other thing I do want to clarify, I don't recall if it was raised during the initial presentation, is although we are increasing, we are requesting to increase the student population, it is a gradual increase over the course of time, we are planning for the future. You heard Ms. Brinkman say that there are two buildings that are proposed, those are capital improvements that obviously require funding for a private school to move into, we're talking probably five years or longer down the road before the first improvement, and then probably another three or four years after that for the other building to be built, and so, yes, we are talking about additional increases, but it's very gradual, probably over the course of the next 10 years.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question, so with that in mind, the traffic improvements would start regardless of the other capital improvements?
So I believe some of the improvements and some of the immediate operational improvements that are actually already in effect, based on a number of conversations that we've had with neighbors, I believe the requirement from a timing condition here is, as we start to implement and move forward, that I think it's prior, I can't remember exactly, I don't have the staff report in front of me, but prior to the issuance of, I can't remember if it's a building permit or a CO for the next building, and so it would be, it would be down the road as well.
Well, it certainly sounds like it's an existing issue for all of the residents now, so I would encourage moving forward with that. I think the one thing that I'm pretty sure there's a consensus up here is that striping a do not block block is not gonna work. There needs to be a signalization or officer on site to make the traffic happen, so that the folks at Kings Point can safely get out of their space.
Is the applicant willing to put those into effect immediately, though, with the light and the police officer?
Or at least in the beginning of the first phase.
Yeah, well, minimally, the first...
I think, I think the beginning of the first phase is what makes sense, I think that's what was anticipated.
But rather than CO time, the beginning of the first phase.
Understood, and again, unfortunately, my client couldn't be here today, they're out of town, but between now and County Commission, as I imagine, we'll be working with staff to craft the conditions that are being discussed here today. I know the signal, for example, just came up two days ago, was not part of the staff report, the idea was that would also be crafted before BCC next week, and so we will certainly work with staff to come up with timing triggers as well.
So I just have one other thing about the amplification issue from the football field, I don't know if staff was aware of this, but if the, if folks could please speak to this resident, I mean, I know that amplification for quote-unquote "special events" is an exemption under Article V, but I don't know that regular football practices are special events, and so if you could please find out when the violations of the amplification issue are happening, and if someone could please talk to code about their response to...
There's not a, there's not an open code matter right now, so if there was in the past, we'll look into it and see if there was something that's closed now.
That's not an appropriate response to a person living in the...
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I don't know exactly how it was conveyed, but we'll look into it.
And if I may, I first met Mr. Wolf before we postponed from zoning commission last month, that's my first interaction with him, he did explain a lot of that to me, I will tell you, in the month that's transpired, there's been multiple correspondence and dialogue as recently as 2 o'clock yesterday afternoon between the headmaster of the school and Mr. Wolf. My client, as Mr. Wolf did mention, we've been speaking with him, they're aware of the issue, it is my understanding that my client is in the process of actually completely, right now, as I understand it, the speakers all face towards Vintage Oaks and Mr. Wolf's house, the community he's in, and they are completely reworking their entire sound system and turning it so it now faces and the, and the sound moves to the west rather than to the east toward the community. Again, I'm not a noise expert either, I just want the board to be aware that there is ongoing dialogue that's been taking place, it is my understanding that they are pulling in a third-party sound consulting team, there was an offer to, to kinda take some of the more technical instrumentation and meet in Mr. Wolf's home and try and, we're trying to solve the issue, and that's another point from, from some of the outreach that Ms. Brinkman mentioned, there have been multiple neighbors that we've been speaking with since they all received the notice, that's typically what happens in these instances, it's an opportunity, and again, in Mr. Wolf's case, it sounds like he's been reaching out for longer, and so I do apologize on my client's behalf for that, but there are a number of other clients that showed up and said, well, you know, the buses in this case, and I live next to the home there, and I think we've done a very good job, we've had outreach probably with several hundred individuals that live in proximity to the school over the last six weeks, and, and again, I think we're doing our best to continue the communication and the outreach, and obviously, we'll encourage my client to do so on individual issues such as Mr. Wolf's. With that in mind, I have one last thing, going back to the signal, I just, as we work out a condition with staff, I just want to make sure, because I've heard it said a few times, including from some technical folks, we are perfectly comfortable and willing to, to contribute toward, or pay for the signal and, and the police supervision wherever it's warranted, I just don't want to be in a situation where this, this commission makes a recommendation to the city, to the county commission, and then staff says, signals are too close, it just can't happen under any circumstance, we want to make sure we're offering the best solution possible, whatever that happens to be, and so I just, I'd like there to be some consideration for that, so that we don't all get left out and then no signal happens as a result of it, and I know that can happen sometimes just because of the separation requirements, so...
Any other comments?
Well, I, I just, I do have a comment, that I'm, I'm only going to vote in favor of this if we have the signal at Flanders, if it can be just anywhere, I, I'm going to just respectfully oppose.
And to be clear, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that recommendation, but I, you know, if, if it can't be at Flanders, and I maybe defer back to the folks at Kings Point, better that it's somewhere than nowhere at all, especially given the timing considerations that we were talking about, at least that's my perspective, so I just want to get it out there, because I don't want us in Kings Point and all the lobbying that we've been doing on this for the last several weeks to move this forward, to end up ultimately just not getting any kind of signal condition whatsoever, so, thank you.
Any other questions? We're all ready for a, a motion on item 5B.
I will make a motion to recommend approval of item 5B with the, what is it? Because we're gonna add the light, what am I saying?
With the codicil.
Is going to be any recommendation?
With the recommendation that the signalization either be at Flanders or...
Wherever the county determines.
Or wherever optimizes the safe...
Safety of the, the residents and the students.
And that there be a police officer during the school hours.
If that's gonna, you know, part of that's gonna be whether, part of that's gonna be whether traffic analysis, I mean, a lot of it depends on the numbers, how fast stacking lanes, what is the timing of the lights, all of those things. So I think our recommendation is that everything be on the table for regards to signalization and officers at Flanders and/or Sixtieth, whatever works best to optimize the safe exit from Kings Point.
Exactly what she said.
Do you want to restate that as a motion?
And I will make that as a substitute motion, or, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. All right, that's the end of the agenda, any comments from anyone? I think we're ready for...
A motion to adjourn?
And did you have a comment?
I just, I want to appreciate, I appreciate all you guys' time, I hope you had a great Thanksgiving, we won't see you again until...
Next year.
Next year. I believe the schedule has been sent to everybody, but if not, please reach out to me, and we can get the 2026 calendar sent out, but with that said, I hope everybody has a joyous holiday, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Our next meeting is the second Thursday.
Yes, that's correct. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and a second, all in favor?
Second, aye, ope.
Aye.
The lights are off.